Well, the hour being three o'clock, I'll call this regular council meeting of town council. To order this 28th day of June 2021. We have first duty to perform is the swearing in of councillor Gavin Bates as deputy mayor. Do we need more?
Yeah, sure do.
Do we?
Probably. I don't know where you're gonna be.
Hi Gavin Bates.
Hi Gavin Bates.
You swear that I will diligently, you swear that I will diligently faithfully, faithfully and to best my ability.
And to the best my ability.
Execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of deputy mayor.
The office, the office of deputy mayor.
The town minister.
For the town minister.
So I'm.
So.
Sign this to campus.
Here, if you want to, you want to do two copies and then you can keep one. Okay. We have a proposed agenda before us here. Are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, your worship, one addition, please, for in camera. Under the municipal government act, section 197 clause two and the Freedom of Information Privacy Act. Section 17 disclosure harmful to personal privacy and section 20 disclosure harmful to law enforcement. Please, we'll give you further details at that time.
Thank you. Okay, would someone like to move that we adopt the agenda as amended?
I so move your worship.
Thank you, councillor Hill. All in favor? Carried. First item on the agenda are the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 14th for consideration. Would someone like to move we adopt those minutes as presented?
I'll move those minutes, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Bates. Any errors or amissions to be noted? No? All in favor of the motion? Carried. Okay, moving on to administration, COVID-19 verbal update. Considering, looks like mask use policy discussions.
Thanks, your worship. I'll lead in and certainly ask the senior leadership team to add in as well. So ECC continues to meet Wednesdays. Wednesday will likely be our last meeting just due to limited information coming from chief medical officer. Effective, I believe, this week. So we'll meet as required, but formally will not be as ECC. One thing administration wants to talk to you about is the policy that was adopted December 14th, 2020. The mask use policy. So this is coming in light of what we're expecting on July the first. With moving it to phase three or step three of the COVID plan. Which where I believe masks will not be mandatory in public space. So yeah, we're looking for councils feedback in relation to the policy. If you wish to maintain the policy or amend it or revoke it, so we're looking for your guidance. With this policy. Administratively, we talked this morning just briefly that we have continued to follow the the government's guidelines and restrictions. We feel that this policy in light of July of the first step three that perhaps no longer require this policy. In a mandatory form on a personal case. Maybe that's something of choice. Just to tie into this policy administration on administrative side and our operations are, we'll be talking over the next couple of days regarding. Because COVID is not, it's still there. And how do we manage COVID internally as an organization? So over the next couple of days, we'll be talking about that administrative policy. But this one is Jared governance policy on the mask use within our within our town facilities and work sites. So just looking for some conversation feedback, please.
Okay, well, I think rather than to require a motion to open for discussion, we can just go around the table and maybe get everybody's opinion on it. But I think we're all quite familiar with the policy. One thing, I'm just a little bit curious. CEO Becker, have you discussed it amongst the staff on what their preferences are?
Not directly, Steve, you folks have directly through staff, Steve?
Yep, we did. We had a discussion on Friday with the operations team. In regards to the mask policy, they're of course in favor of lifting the policy if council wishes. But also to maintain some of our COVID protocols though in regards to the symptoms and the check-ins and stuff like that still, so.
Okay. Well, who wants to start off?
Yes, your worship. Yeah, I definitely feel that having it lifted would be. I would be in favor of that, but there is obviously the lingering concerns that don't just, you know, go away after a year and a half of of what we've been going through. So I definitely feel that there should be still pieces and bits and pieces that should be so followed through. I don't know if it requires a hybrid or some different policy of some sort, but as far as masking, I would be in favor of the mask bylaw being lifted, yes. But I do think that there's obviously, we've learned a lot through it. So I don't know if it's just general how we, how we conduct business moving forward. But definitely a lot of learning points that will probably keep our staff and citizens a little bit safer moving forward.
Councillor Bates?
So we've always, I believe, followed the province's guidelines and, and actual regulations. So I would be in favor of continuing to do that. The only concern I could see is if you have an employee who personally really, really wants that protection from his fellow workers, like if he's reticent to work without somebody right beside him wearing a mask, that would be the only concern I'd have. How do you deal with that? But I would follow the provincial guidelines. That's, that's where I feel.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should, we've always followed the provincial guidelines. So let's keep doing that. The Public Health Agency of Canada also issued a guide last week for various activities and kind of broke it into columns, whether people are vaccinated, partial vaccinated, et cetera. I know privacy reasons you can't make or ask people if they are or aren't, but I think it's kind of a good guideline to maybe have on the wall or something and and it's there. So yeah, I'm definitely in favor of following the province.
So my inclination when I read this was exactly that. We should stick with the provincial guidelines and and I think if, if any member of the staff prefers themselves to wear a mask, that would still be fine under those guidelines.
Thank you, your worship. I too support lifting the mask bylaw. Voluntary, if someone wants to wear a mask, that's by their personal choice. So like councillor Bates said, we've been following the guidelines for about a year and eight months now. So I don't know why we would not continue to follow the direction of the chief public health officer. Thank you.
I was going to say we could go around to the staff have any input, but. Yeah, Stephen, you gave your. So I'll respect that as a report from the staff. I think the one thing I can see if there, there is someone, and if it's a staff person that's still concerned about it. I can't see why you can't say to your staff, say, okay, look, if you're, you know, so and so is still concerned about it when you're, if you have to have a discussion with a certain person to respect that and wear a mask yourself as well, you know. But I can't see why that can't be kind of a bit of a staff policy at your staff level. But I agree with everything that's been said here, so.
Just one point, that point of order, maybe. If I heard it right, thought I heard a couple of references to bylaw. It's not a bylaw. It's just a policy. So I don't know if someone's out there listening and reporting it. We never did have a bylaw. Thank you.
Oh, that's a good point.
So if council's okay, just hearing you on the employee side. So we do have administrative policy and the protocols. I think those are really valid comments about comfort. So we'll certainly put that message in within our protocols and communicate that out accordingly that based on conversation and comfort. Employees have a right to ensure they feel safe in the workplace.
Okay, is someone prepared to make a motion then to the effect of I guess disbanding our mask use policy? Or what, how would you word that?
So be worded, is it July 1st confirmation on step three? So I suggest council to repeal policy 2020 010 mask use policy effective July 1st, 2021.
Someone prepared to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, councillor Reberger. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you. All right, next item, of course, information item is council action plan. CEO doesn't have a report because he's been on holidays.
I can send the other report, your worship. I'll maybe entertain you a little bit.
Okay, we'll fill us in, sure.
Sure, no, I was away for the week. Thanks to Director Jenkins for supporting me in that position of acting CEO, of course, the management team. Just a few highlights. First of all, I want to introduce council to our HR support. As you know, we're as per your overarching vision is to strengthen our HR program within the town. So we're certainly working on your, your vision, your priority. So in doing that, billionaire foundation out and really getting into it. We contracted a company called Activia HR. Representative is Angel Mullins, who's actually here today to support us. Introduced, meet you council, so you put a face to the name and some of the work that we're doing. Instrumental in moving our HR program forward. We just had actually council, about a four hour ish management supervisors meeting, large component of that discussion was regarding health and safety and HR and some of the work that we're doing to better strengthen our systems regarding HR and Jill has been instrumental and and really guiding us forward on that. So Angel's here today and tomorrow to support us on some recruitment programs. And yeah, so she's here just to watch the meeting, so.
Welcome.
And with that, Mayor Council, that's really my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions with the CEO? No? How was the holiday? Okay, would someone like to move we accept the CEO's report for information?
I'd so move your worship that we accept the report for information.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. All in favor? Carried. And of course, the action control touched on that. Do you have any, any questions on that? The CEO, perhaps? Have we finalized our policy on fire? What is it for guidelines for charging fee for camping and such?
Yes, your worship, council approved that policy.
Yeah, that's.
I think when you might have been away.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't read the pen. Sorry, thank you. Any other comments from the action control plan? If not, would someone like to move we accept this for information?
I'll move your worship.
Thank you. Councillor Barclay, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. All right. Operational Services RFD regarding 37th Street reconstruction.
Thanks. So I am here to present council with an update on the responses that we received with the adjacent property orders along 37th Street. In regards to the design as well as the proposed special tax for the forthcoming project on 37th. A little while ago, about four weeks ago, we started approaching landowners, business owners along that strip to talk about the proposed design as well as giving them a kind of a heads up in regards to the proposed special tax that will be coming forward to get some feedback from those owners. Each owner at that time was given the approximate amount based on their frontage, based on the cost estimates that we had. Just recently, we went back to them either by in person or by phone or by email. Some were a little busier to get a hold of. So we did notify all of them again in regards to what that special tax would be based on 15% of the paving costs spread over a 15-year period. And also based on the actual tendered amount that we received based on the low tender from Central City. All property owners were happy to hear that the project was moving forward. Majority requested additional meetings to finalize driveway widths, updating as well as being updated on the construction schedule as obviously road closures for some of the businesses is going to be important to coordinate. Only one of the owners along the strip was against the special tax with the majority not in favor nor against, but understood the reasoning behind it. This will be brought back to council through the tax bylaw to be done every April in 2022. As well as each subsequent year as that special tax is, does need to be approved and awarded every year. Briefly, just in regards to the tender, we only had two contractors submit bids. Central City was at a million 33. Border paving was at a million 117. All the tenders were, both tenders were evaluated by Altera. Nothing was out of balance. Both contractors are both well-known in town here. So Altera did recommend award to Central City. Central City also completed 61st app last year and is currently working on the town's mill and overlay program. The total project cost with engineering, construction and contingency. Sorry, there's correction there. It's actually 10% contingency is 1,233,775. This project will be funded from the building Canada grant as well as the utility stabilization reserve. We are looking for council to approve the project award of 37th Street to Central City asphalt for the price of 1,333,207,000. Sorry, and 98 cents. To be funded from the building Canada fund and the utility reserve. So take any comments?
Okay. Anybody prepared to make a motion in this effect?
That's so move your worship that we approve the award of the 37th Street reconstruction contract to Central City asphalt limited for 1,33,270,98 dollars to be funded from the building Canada grant and the utility stabilization reserve. And I do have one question.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. Yes, your question?
And the question is through to director Kennedy. How many owners are along 37th Street there that?
Wasn't expecting that one. I believe, believe there's eight.
Eight?
Eight to nine owners, property owners. So there are multiple businesses, but eight to nine property owners.
Okay, so supplementary then, so of the not in favor, not against. Was there more in favor than not against?
Like, as per, there really wasn't any in favor, but they understood why the property tax was being presented. Because unfortunately, I didn't have any property owners willing to say yes. Send me an extra tax for this project, but they'd understood why the special tax was being presented and paying for that portion of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm in director Kennedy or Jenkins, I'm sorry. You only got, how many were invited?
It was a public tender, so it was presented on APC as well as bids and tender. So it was an open one. It's just, this, this time of year is pretty common that we would only have the two two bidders would have been maybe three with another local buy.
Okay. You should never have two RFD sitting in front of you and you get the wrong names. My apologies, director Kennedy. And Jenkins. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to an RFD regarding the sale of lot 25 block 71.
Yeah, so we're looking to present the purchase agreement for the sale of lot 25 block 71, plan 2121219 consisting of 8.02 acres of industrial property to 693736 Alberta Limited in the amount of $830,000. The town and the number company have been working on the creation of a sale of this parcel since 2015. Following the completion of environmental site remediation, respecting the former wastewater treatment and waste transfer stations. The parcel has now been subdivided and is available for sale. The parcel will be utilized as part of the industrial operations of built-in welding and manufacturing. So at this time, we're looking for a council motion to approve the sale of the property for 830,000 in accordance with the draft purchase agreement. The purchase agreement's pretty straightforward. Does outline that there's a portion of off-site levies that'll still be payable on the property when a development permit would be pulled in accordance with our bylaws and as well payment to reimburse for the survey costs for the parcel, which was consistent with our previous purchase agreements that we had on those parcels in the, in the industrial parks, so.
Okay, thank you, Director Jenkins. Is someone prepared to make a motion to go with the staff recommendation?
Also move your worship?
Okay, thank you, councillor Barclay. Discussion. No discussion? And I'll ask the question, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Next, Director Jenkins, you've got an RFD regarding Discovery Wildlife.
Yes.
Point of order, your worship? Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to recuse myself from this item.
Oh.
Due to a pecuniary interest.
Okay. All right.
All right. Um.
All right.
All right.
Director Jenkins.
So we're looking for a council consideration of a development permit application submitted by Discovery Wildlife Park for the construction of 10 new accessory cabins to be added to the existing campground. The cabins are, one of the cabins will be located between existing cabins one and two. The remainder to be constructed on sites four, seven and 25 through 31. Vanessa, I'm not sure if you can scroll down to the map, not that it's or the site plan. So the one cabin will be located in the area that says tenting. And then across the top, 31 to 25, and then site four and seven down near the southeast end. So the use of this parcel is regulated by the direct control A4 district. And council is the development authority for applications within this district. The LUB provides the following acceptable uses within the district. Accessory buildings and uses, campgrounds, dwelling units for occupancy by the owner. Environmentally friendly operations, institutional service facility, parking, zoo and zoo composting. So each of the proposed cabins will be 12 feet in overall height, 200 square feet in floor area. And will provide a side yard setback of 10 feet from any adjacent property line. The district does not specify a specific setback. However, this 10-foot setback is consistent with comparable set side yards in other districts. So at this time, administration is recommending that council approves development permit 21D065 for the development of 10 new accessory cabins, subject to the conditions listed in the attached draft development permit.
Okay, thank you. Someone prepared to make a motion that support that staff recommendation?
Yes, your worship, I would make the motion, the recommended motion.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Discussion.
Worship to Director Jenkins, just a question. There's mention made here of a potential future request if to move them. So would that just be done at a council resolution type?
Yes, it would be a new permit application provided where they're being relocated to. So yeah, that was just indicated as there are some land negotiations underway. So there is potential that they could be moved in the future.
But likely in the same general areas?
Same general area, but potentially to the north, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Staff or the council has all the confidence in the world in the staff that they've covered all bases. Sure you have, thank you. No further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carried unanimously, thank you. Let Mr. Reberger return. Okay, the next item, my others, correspondence and information.
Your worship, item number three, the Innisville Town Theatre and Innisville Ski Club request for an exemption. Are we going to talk about that? I believe we should.
CEO Becker, do you have any comment in that effect?
No.
Is it a question to me, councillor Harrison, or to council?
To council. To council directly, yeah.
Okay.
They've got a request in for a tax exemption, both the Ski Club and the Innisville Town Theater. And I guess, do we deal with it or we just accept the report for information?
I Councilor Harrison, I would suggest this is of significant impact to the, to the community that this is something that would have to be explored extensively because it affects not only these two, it would only be logical that other, you know, nonprofits are going to expect the same treatment. And I think it's something that has to be carefully approached. I'm not saying for or against it at this point, but I think we have to be careful that we set a precedent and and at this point, take it into consideration and.
I would agree, your worship, but this is a very slippery slope.
Yeah.
We get into this, and I know once precedent's been set. Yeah, I think it is a little more than just a discussion today. And maybe we can bring it back to an AMP meeting or an in-camera meeting or something that we need to.
Yeah. Maybe it's. Comment, sure. CEO Becker?
You bet. To all council, wouldn't be required probably so much to the Foid, would not be considered an in-camera conversation from my perspective in the knowledge of Foid. There is some MGA guidelines on tax exemption, so there's some detail aligned in legislation on how and who for tax exemption consideration. What I would advise council perhaps to look at last sentence of the correspondence. And there's a statement stating that paid welcome opportunity for Town Theater, Ski Hill and council to meet, discuss. And based on your desire, we could sport a delegation request form to to the two organizations representatives and make it come before council for that conversation. Then you can get the detail on, on the status and what's going on with those respective organizations. And at that time, administration can do a little more research into the Municipal Government Act on what tax exemptions, how that process looks.
Thank you.
So just a little bit more background on this. I think the reason this is coming up is because it's come to the attention of these groups that some of the surrounding municipalities do have a some, a policy similar to what they're requesting. So I think that would be part of the information we need to upcoming discussions as to, as well as the MJ is what, how other communities around us are approaching this slippery slope.
What's that, your worship? The council's, just council wants, want administration to conduct that research in advance of engagements, just on what other municipalities are doing regarding tax exemption policies?
Your worship, through to CEO Becker, I would think that would be pertinent information and, you know, is it just during COVID or is it something that's in place all the time? All the time, so I was not aware. So I guess it would be good to see what other communities are doing, keeping in mind that we've already, you know, given significant chunk of money to the Ski Hill and stuff. And I, it's kind of interesting that they're both on one application here, one letter, but and I would love the opportunity to have them in front of us where we can discuss this.
Okay, we need a motion then?
Yes, please.
So I would move that we direct administration to do some research into tax exemptions for nonprofit societies owning property.
Okay. Any further discussion to that motion? Councilor Bates?
I guess if we're gonna do that research, I'd, I'd like to know some of the various, because I know in the past, we've been asked by churches and different, so to really dig into it, I guess, because it it indeed is a slippery slope once you start, so thank you.
Well, and the MGA comes into effect as well, so it's not a simple subject for sure that we can control everything. But anyways, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion then? Carrie, thank you. Any other questions of those correspondence and information? No? Okay, well, would someone like to move, we accept these items for information?
Also move, your worship?
Thank you, Councilor Bates. All in favor of the motion? Carrie. Quickly go around the table, Councilor Hill, you're on the hot seat.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, nothing too much to add. Just gotta catch up on some of the information from the last couple engagements with potential multiplex discussions. I gotta catch up on those, but other than that, that's about all. Just trying to stay, stay cool.
Yeah. So it done quite a few optional things since we last met. I did listen to the June fifteenth Doug Griffiths presentation to the welcoming committee. And I did listen in on four H CMA presentations related to well-being, aquatic, fieldhouse and curling to the public. My conclusion, listening to those, lots of great ideas and desires, there's been a lot of work to distill the wants and needs and match with our capacity, I think, to to build something that'll, that'll work for everyone. June the twenty-fourth, I did attend PCPS general meeting. They only have those annually now, apparently. And they're very busy, very viable. The last time I connected with that organization, you know, they were branching out and trying to really prove themselves. And I think they've done it with the communities. They're a hundred percent dependent on them for their planning. They do a lot of planning specific. Every type of planning that we do, plus IDPs, subdivision, development, appeal board, land use bylaws. They have four full-time, including Craig and a point six often, an office administration person. The one interesting thing they plan to do is this fall after the election, they plan to offer council orientation as it relates to all of the things that they do, and it might be useful even to, to consider that for this council. I think they are budgeting some small staff increases for the future, which is of interest. And that's it. Thank you.
So I've had MPC meeting, Chamber of Commerce and Transportation this past week. I also listened to four sessions of the multiplex discussion with the user groups, which was interesting. And then I did attend for a bit on Saturday, the Pride event at the Coffee Cottage, and just want to say a little guess, kudos to Kane Williams, who came on his day off to support one of the youth speakers that was there that day. So that was nice of him to do that. And this week, I'm looking forward to Canada Day and the umbrellas.
So since we're last here, I attended a joint youth committee with the Chinook's Ed School Board. And the gist of that was, we'll let you know in September when we see what COVID's doing and what's going on. But the hope is to get back to the previous arrangement. And I also have an upcoming library meeting tomorrow afternoon. And I was capped not that far away from the CAO, but every third vehicle in the West country is a black Dodge, so it's pretty hard to figure that out.
Thank you, your worship. It was a very quiet week. I attended MPC. I also attended the Pride event on Saturday, and it was very well organized, very well ran. And yeah, it was for the first in Innisville. I, I think the organizers should be congratulated and, and given accolades for it. I'm also volunteering on Canada Day Thursday at the historical site. I haven't got my orders yet, but I'm certain I'll get them this week and what Anna wants me to do, but so we'll see how that, how that works out. Other than that, and I did attend two of the four sessions that we had on the, you know, the multiplex recreation amenities that are upcoming. And I would agree with Councilor Bates that there's, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And I guess as long as we can manage the expectations of our, of our ratepayers, that's gonna be, you know, there are a lot of sort of pie in the sky kind of stuff, and, you know, we only have so many dollars, so as long as we can manage the expectations, I think we're gonna get a facility that's gonna be certainly number one in central Alberta. So thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the efforts everybody made to listen in. I managed to get in on two about half sessions of it, but it was very informative, but a little bit, but it was the best way to do it for each facility manager to give their, you know, what they would like to see and certainly shed some light on the cost that we're looking at, we're faced with on all of these facilities to try and accomplish all of those needs. But anyways, looking forward to July first. I want to get together with anybody and see who wants to look after different areas. It's spread around so much. I want to be traveling around and taking them in too, but I want, I'd like get to, for council to take an opportunity to participate in some of these presentations and things, and I'll talk to each of you, see who wants to do what, or if they have a pet peeve area they want to partake in. We'll work together and have a good, good day. Quickly, you run around the staff. Stephen, did you manage to, you got anything else you want to touch on?
Quick update on the projects, capital projects. They've gone very well. All the underground's done on the two major projects. They were working on roads here, base, and then concrete over the next two weeks, so progressing really well on, on all the projects. The Millen overlay project went really well. So yeah, no great, great weather, great contractors, so things, things going well.
The dental building project is sure coming along nicely, isn't it? Anything, Erica? Nothing?
I was just gonna give an update that we have hired our skate park summer staff students, so they actually start tomorrow. So we'll start to see them over at the skate park. The market on Main will be very hot tomorrow, so we're looking at some options of how to keep people cool. Canada Day and then IDP meeting next Monday for IDP committee members before the council meeting in council chambers, just a reminder.
Okay. Ken, have you got anything cooking? Erica?
Yeah, I'll just add in for Steve. Missile cessation has been permitted for fifty-second. Highway fifty-two, sorry. Highway fifty-four. You know what I mean? It's south of town. So I'm not sure if you received that notification, but.
And you were just a comment through to CEO Becker. Saturday at the, at the event, there, I counted what I could see about six trains, and there wasn't a whistle. It was different, very different. So kudos.
Okay. Do we open up to the people outside? Are there any comments or questions of the, on the internet?
Any public members want to speak to council? Use the raise hand feature.
No? Okay. Move on then. You've got some upcoming events listed there. Other than that, I guess we would entertain a motion to move in camera. Someone would like to move?
Your worship, I would make the motion that we move in camera.
Okay, thank you, Councilor, Councilor Hill. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.